Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Carrangelo.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Ms. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hahn.
Here.
Mr. I'm sorry, Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here.
We have a quorum, please rise to the list of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, everyone. Our first action is going to be the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board should provide a period of public comment at every meeting. You will be limited to three minutes' duration. The timing will be kept by our Board Secretary. Is there anyone this evening wishing to speak to the Board? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion, which leads us to the interview portion of the evening. And before I call for a quick recess so that we can bring in the first candidate, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Juliana. I myself am going to recuse myself from the proceedings because I might have a potential conflict. So I will be joining you when we come back from the break. All right, so we'll call for a quick recess. All right, we're back in session. I believe I turn it over.
Well, Mr. Winston has a.
Madam President, I have a point of order question. Hopefully with input by legal counsel.
Is your microphone on?
It is on, can you hear me? Is that better? Okay, a point of order question. The questions that were just handed us, these six questions, there was consensus made by the Board at some point in the past, at our last meeting, that these questions would have been submitted to us prior to the meeting for the purpose of looking them over and to answer and ask any questions that we have and they would be answered. And at that time also was mentioned that if we had any changes or suggestions, we can make them. I had not gotten this list prior, and I don't know, have any other Board members seen this list before? No, okay, so that didn't happen. Roughly two weeks ago, I did approach though and took the initiative in spite of not having this and offered an additional question for vetting. I was informed tonight that that question would not be added as a result of it not being voted on by consensus. So you've put me in a catch-22 where I was looking for a document that was already approved upon. I submitted a question. The question was killed because we didn't have consensus over something that we already had consensus on. So I'd like to know, I'd like to have that question and that question only that I submitted to you, Dr. Valesky, voted on by this Board by consensus, as was stated at the time, to be included or not included in the vote.
As a clarification, Mr. Winston, you didn't submit a question to me.
I spoke with you.
You spoke with me and asked me.
There was no.
You asked me as an individual Board member with another Board member. There was never a written document.
Was there a protocol? Okay, was there a protocol that was stated on how any changes would be made? All that was stated is we would have this list of questions and we would have the opportunity to then respond. That never happened. I did, you're absolutely right. There was no protocol established, so I chose to go to you. Who authored these questions? Who wrote, put this together?
I did.
Oh, so I chose the right person, excuse me, I chose the right person to go to. And ultimately, the answer was given to us yesterday or today.
Today. Today.
That that question was rejected with no communication prior. After that was agreed upon in session, that that is how we'd be handling these questions.
That is not accurate, Mr. Winston. That question was not rejected. It was not put before the Board. I simply explained to you and the rest of the Board members that my role as superintendent is not to be involved in the selection of a candidate for the vacancy on the Board of Education.
And as we know, the question specifically was, I believe, can I state the question, counsel?
Well, as I understand it, as you know, I wasn't at your last meeting and I wasn't at the preliminaries to this evening, but I understand the process, as I understand this, that has been utilized here is for purposes of trying to preserve insofar as, as much as possible, the integrity that no one has advanced information with regard to the questions that are being asked. And I understand it was a collaborative process in coming up with the questions.
That is true.
So I'm thinking out loud with you to say that I would ask you not to state the question because that would defeat the whole purpose of the reason why you're having this.
Understood, but in that ruling, and I agree with you, and in that ruling, it was stated that we would see these questions, they would be sent to us for our review. I'm going to stand down, there's another counsel.
All right. I want to add, do we have minutes? I don't remember it being sent, that it was going to be sent to our review. But Mr. Sizmar's waiting. Perhaps we'd like to hand Mr. Sizmar.
Yeah, we were just handed this. I thought there were seven, and that's not revealing anything that was said and closed. And I would like to make a motion that we vote whether or not to include Mr. Winston's question tonight.
Go ahead, Mrs. Becker, please.
I'll second the motion.
Has the entire Board seen the question?
No.
And for purposes of the process that you've taken thus far, do you agree too?
There was no protocol established on how a question would be submitted, so I chose to go directly and verbally to the superintendent. No protocol was established.
And with all due respect, the Board hasn't seen these six questions in their entirety until two minutes prior to us sitting down.
Ms. Becker?
I disagree with that respectfully. We sat there and we came up with these questions and as a group. And Victor made sure that he wrote down what we wanted to ask the questions about. And we were all there, we all heard these six questions. We all, just let me.
I'm just, I didn't say anything.
I know, I saw the shoulders. We were all there at the same time when we decided that these are the questions we were going to ask. I don't recall there being a seventh, I recall just the six questions. So there is no question on here that we didn't talk about that night, to the best of my recollection.
I have a question.
My recollection agrees with Ms. Becker.
So you guys memorized the questions.
Excuse me, one second.
Memorize it, Mark, we talked about it. We chose it. We.
I agree.
We chose, this is no mystery.
I know it's not a mystery, however, we were, I think it would be.
Excuse me, just for order, just for order. I was sort of mid, I was definitely mid thought. I only remember that we're six and I didn't memorize the questions. I just remembered that we're six because I remember sitting and trying to figure out the amount of time that it would take and blocking it out. And six was the number that stuck in my head because we figured this many minutes per question. So no, did I memorize? No. Do I remember that the final number was six that we had as a group? Yes. All right, Ms. Becker, were you done? I'm sorry, we're like all over the place with that.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we, if the six of, if the seven of us, whatever, decided the questions, then we all knew what the questions were going to be.
Mr. Carrangelo?
Thank you. We were told we were going to get the questions. We didn't get the questions.
I don't remember that.
My mind says that if I had these questions, I could review them. And I wouldn't say tweak them, but we could look at them, you know. And I went to people and discussed this, so this is the first time. So I feel that it's hard to memorize these questions. I certainly could not memorize the questions perfectly. I mean, maybe I'm not that smart. But I couldn't memorize them, I wanted them, didn't see them. However, we were told that we're getting them. And we did it in a very, I wouldn't say quick manner. We did them well. However, when you sit on it for a day or two or a week, it affords us the opportunity to think and maybe come up with other questions or, you know, revamp or use different language that might be better. I don't know. I'm just saying that I thought that we were getting the questions. I asked a few times and I didn't get them. Not mad or anything, so I just feel that we were told we're getting and we didn't get them. And again, I want to repeat, if we had the questions, we could read them and look at them and maybe detract, add, you know, things that are more pertinent, I don't know. So that's just my thought.
Ms. Becker?
So, you know, it's just like with any debate. The questions really serve for us to, it's not really the questions that are as crucial. The questions give us a chance to see how the candidates handle themselves with public speaking, with being asked something without advanced knowledge of it, which it, Board members, we are always confronted with. Whenever we go places, people will ask us things. So we could ask, really, you could ask somebody, do you like the fact that the sky is blue? And what's important is how they, what's important is how they handle the question, how they handle themselves, how they're in public speaking. Yes, we do want to know their opinions on certain things with the school districts, but I'm also under the firm belief that a lot of times people can't ask the questions. I always felt this way with candidate debates. Unless you're a sitting Board member, there are some questions that are very difficult to answer. So I think that, you know, as far as getting opinions go, that tweaking a word or two isn't going to, wasn't going to affect the candidates. I don't see anything on here that would negatively affect either candidate. And these are all the subjects and questions that we talked about as a group. I don't remember either being told that we would be given an opportunity to tweak them. I believe we took consensus that these were going to be the questions.
We were told we were getting them, but we didn't get them.
Okay, I guess we remember differently.
Mr. Sizmar.
And even on that point, not to expose anything that was talked about in closed, we were at six. There was a Board member that had brought up the number eight. And there was one more question added. I don't know what that question was. I have that number. And there was another Board member who had talked about eight. I remember we were talking about six. This Board member said, eight is more of a number. And we came up with a seventh question. This is my recollection. And my recollection was that Dr. Valesky was going to work on these, send them out to all of us prior to the meeting. And if we had any questions or anything about them, we would get back to him. And my statement before was, this is the first time any of us have seen these six. Discussing something in even in a closed or an open setting and kind of formulating an exact question isn't even close to being handed six questions in print form for us to see. So my motion was, just because we have some discrepancy here, exactly what went on, and we can't speak about everything that went on in closed, and so I haven't gone there. But my motion is to at least vote whether or not to include one more question for both candidates. That's my motion.
I second the motion with the question heard.
But have all the Board members seen your question?
Nope, I didn't know the protocol, it wasn't established.
So I mean, to preserve the integrity, as we're talking about the process, it would either have to be distributed for all the Board members to see, to vote without being discussed, and then have the vote or to go into executive session to discuss it and then come out and vote on it.
No, if I could speak, I have no objection to that. I want to respond to something Ms. Becker said, and I respect your opinion.
Don't we have to stay with the motion?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow the order. If he made a motion and we're discussing that, don't we have to stay with that?
I think that's approved.
That's fine, whatever you feel.
But you're staying with the discussion of the motion as to, I mean, I don't think, you can't vote if without having seen the question. So the way to, you'd either have to have it distributed or convenient to go into executive session to discuss it and then come out to vote on the motion. So you'd have to table the motion to address being able to make a deliberative, informed decision on that question that's being discussed.
Either one, either one is fine with my motion.
Either satisfies it.
As I understand what you're just saying, the way to have this issue addressed in closed session, the motion would first have to be tabled, motion to go to closed session.
To discuss the question.
Have the discussion in closed session.
Okay.
And then we come back out and go from there.
A motion for closed session to discuss.
So we need to.
Make a motion to go in closed.
Well, we need a motion to table this.
I can, I'll table my motion for now.
Mr. Sizmar, second Mr. Winston.
I make a motion to go into closed.
We have to vote on that.
We need a vote first. Okay.
All right.
All those in favor of tabling?
All those in favor of tabling the motion?
Any opposed?
What are we, what are we voting on?
This was the motion, this was tabling the motion that Mr. Sizmar just made.
Tabling it?
Tabling it.
Yes. Okay.
This is a vote on tabling the motion.
Okay, so we've got unanimous vote to table, okay. Now we can do a motion.
Need a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion to go in closed session.
All right, Mr. Carrangelo, Mr. Winston?
For purposes of discussing the Board vacancy. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We are in closed session.
We are in closed.
We'll be back shortly. We are now back in open session. And for members of the community and for members in the audience here, we are here for the Board to conduct interviews to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education. For members of the public to understand what the rest of the meeting will be comprised of, each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement and then they'll be followed by six questions that each candidate will be asked. So without further ado, Mr. Kona. Good evening and welcome. You're here to interview for the current vacancy on the Board of Education. When you were invited to be interviewed, you were apprised of the format, that questions would be asked and that you would be allotted three minutes to respond to each question. The questions were not to be shared with you in advance, and we did not do so. Before we begin with the questions, you have three minutes to make an opening statement describing why you are interested in becoming a member of the Board of Education and discussing why the Board should select you to fill the vacancy. Amongst your accomplishments, please include any community involvement you have had. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor and pleasure to be sitting in front of all of you today. I am ecstatic to be here, to be interviewed, and I am looking forward to joining this illustrious group. I'm extremely proud of the work that you have done. I'm extremely proud of the work that the district has done over several decades of hard work to get it to where it is today. And I believe that I can add value to an already great effort that you guys are putting forth. I'm interested in joining you because I'm a very active member of the community. I've lived here for almost 20 years. I have three children, two of whom have passed through your doors and have done so with very much successful educational career past their graduation. And I'll speak to that if the opportunity arises. I'm looking forward to contributing with my background, my experience. I think I do add a tremendous amount of value, being a small business owner, which my company is a construction company, which I think gives me a unique perspective. By trade, I am a project manager. Time management, organization, research, putting things together and executing things, those are my forte. And I believe that that would come in value to any organization. I have been a volunteer through my kids. I have been passionate about making sure that they're well-rounded. And in doing so, the education part I have left to the district. But apart from the education portion, I have actually spent time with my children as their coach and coaching other kids, whether it is through EBBL, their baseball and softball program, which I was a Board member on for a number of years. I was involved in the soccer program, the East Brunswick Soccer Club, in a wide variety of positions. I did not get, I did not take up the offer of being on their Board. My, it was just too much to be on the East Brunswick Board and also to be on the Fast Break Board. Couldn't divide up my time enough to be able to handle soccer. But as I also mentioned, for 15 years, I've been involved with the Fast Break Basketball Program, which is another recreation program. So volunteering in all of these different capacities over the past 16 years. I am not involved with the East Brunswick Baseball anymore or the Soccer Club, but I am still involved with the Fast Break Program. We have about 650 kids in the program, we had about 1,200, and I'm the current president of Fast Break. Volunteering is something I love doing. Primarily, it has been.
Your time's up, sir.
Instilled in me by my parents to give back to my community as an immigrant who's thankful for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Kona. Mr. Kona, before we proceed, if you wouldn't mind, please pull the microphone a little bit closer so that everyone can hear. Thank you.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Okay. Testing, testing.
Okay. Mr. Kona, how has the role of a Board member changed in the past three years?
I think the role itself, the function of the position, hasn't changed dramatically. But I think the world has changed. I think our perceptions have changed. I think technologies have changed. The past three years, there have been challenges, and those challenges are lingering. And I'm sure, as Board members, you hear about those challenges on a regular basis. But apart from the challenges, I think the world has gone in a very interesting direction. It is going to impact you as a Board member from the perspective that we have to adjust, we have to adapt, whether it's a challenge situation, whether it's an opportunity situation. So I think from that perspective, there's a lot of new things that are on your plate as a Board member that you have to take into consideration, whether it's the newer technologies, whether it's remote learning, which we've taken advantage of, you know, on days that are, where it's snowing, we keep the kids at home, but we can still teach them remotely. I think we can also explore other avenues that technology offers us. The primary, from my understanding, the primary role of a Board member is to make sure that the administrators and the management of the district are able to function, do their jobs, and do it effectively, and open doors and opportunities where they see they need doors and opportunities open. Whether it's management, whether it's administration, whether it's the teachers, I think the job of the Board is to make sure that these opportunities are available to them and the tools that they need are available to them. So from that perspective, I think the role is consistent. But I think as the world has changed, I think it brings new topics and conversations to this room, you know, whether it's on this side of the wall or the other side. I think you have a lot of things to think about and consider and. I'll leave it at that.
Next question. How has the student experience changed over the past three years? And what student support will likely dominate the Board's agenda over the next year and beyond?
The student experience has changed dramatically, I feel. Over the past three years, whether it's situations that have been created due to COVID, whether it's technology and social media and its impact, the use of smartphones and its impact. I know smartphones have been in there for more than three years, but I think when you look at the three-year timetable, the most important event that happened in those three years was COVID. And I think remote learning, for some, they took it in stride, for others, they didn't take it in stride. So I think it opened up our eyes as parents and as members of the community to what's going on. Other things have happened also in the past three years. You've seen a direction where colleges are not looking at SATs and ACT scores as much. And they are looking strongly at other aspects of a student's resume. And students need to be more well-rounded, more so now than ever before. So I think there's a lot of things that have changed in a student's life, whether it's academically, whether it's technology, whether it's mental health. I think that is probably going to be one of the bigger things that we have to address as a group and as a community. And I'm sure you are all dealing with those topics right now. But I think between the mental health and the technology and the way the world views things, the way colleges do things, our job here is to prepare these students for whatever they choose after they leave, pass through the doors, whether it's college, whether it's vocation, whether it's going into the job market directly, whatever they pursue, we want them to be well-prepared for those successful ventures. So I think our goals have stayed the same, but I think the world has changed a little bit and we have to be more cognizant of making sure that they're prepared for it.
So to follow up, you mentioned two or three topical areas. How would you assign the priorities?
I don't think you, I think each has their own merit. I don't think one necessarily becomes prioritized over another. I think priority can be assigned based on, you know, primarily, one way to do it is to say, okay, what is the need of the hour? What are we grappling with? What is the urgent matter at hand? And if it's mental health, it's mental health. And I think that, right now, talking to kids, talking to my own kids, talking to other people's kids, talking to other parents and their experiences, I think the environment that we are in the world and how our children get bombarded with all sorts of information. It was great when I was growing up, I could leave school, there were no cell phones. I went home, I could turn my mind off. Today, they can't turn their minds off. And, you know, there's a thought process that we shouldn't have given them smartphones, we shouldn't have given them access to social media, that constant influx of that information. These are challenges that I don't know if the Board really should be, should be forced to deal with, but you have to deal with them. These are realities. I mean, when they go away, when they go home, they're constantly communicating with one another. And, you know, cyberbullying is something we have to look at and we have to take seriously. And it happens more so, bullying happens more so now than it's ever happened before, I feel. So I think we have to look at, from a priority perspective, I think mental health will be number one in terms of urgency. But I also see opportunities with education. I see opportunities with newer technology, I see opportunities with the advent of newer academics like cybersecurity. I know that's not a program here at this level, and it's generally not. But I think cybersecurity is something that's going to be in the collegiate world. It's a necessity, you know. It's almost to the point where if you, you know, when I went to college, you know, if you took computers, everyone's like, yeah, you got to take computers, it's going to be the thing of the future. So I think AI, cybersecurity, I think we need to start looking at these types of things from an academic perspective and making sure that our kids are prepared for those types of topics and that type of education.
Thank you. The Board is faced with many complex issues such as special education services, facilities capacity, and financial resources. Describe your approach to becoming educated about these and many other complex issues facing the Board.
I think as a member of the Board, we have to do a lot of research. I know it's a time-consuming position. And the resources are there, I'm sure they will be made available to us by administration. But I think we need to also do independent research ourselves. As far as the topics that you mentioned, if you could repeat those three things for me?
Special education services, facilities capacity, and financial resources. Special education services, facilities capacity, and financial resources.
Yeah. Financial resources is going to be one interesting conversation, that is for sure. Facility capacity, we've already That ball's already started going down the hill. We know very well that we are pretty much at max capacity, and we know we are going to need to expand our facilities. And there is a great opportunity before the board to create new facilities, which I am pretty excited about. I think we have an opportunity to add things that have been on people's wish lists for several years, whether it's trying to put together a swimming pool for our swim team, which they don't have, or adding on newer subjects or new facilities in the science or engineering or technology space to accommodate for the newer developments. I'm excited about the expansion of the facilities. I think it's, for years and years and years, East Brunswick schools, especially the high school, it's been a constant struggle to just add on, just add on, just add on. As far as paying for it, yeah, I think to a certain extent the tax base will have to be asked and will have to vote on it. And I think this being an education-centric place, I think they will agree to a new high school and to what we need to do. They will pay for it to a certain extent. I think we also need to petition the state government and anybody else that we can for grants and monies to try to fund this high school. We can't put that tax burden strictly on the taxpayer. We have to work with what we have and do the best that we can. I'm sure we will figure it out. You guys have always, this board has always been able to figure it out, and I'm very sure that we'll be able to, whether it's completely building a new high school or leveraging the existing structure that we have, if that's what needs to happen to stay within budget, I think we will I'm confident that we're going to, whatever budget we have to work with, I'm confident that the board is going to utilize that money very well. It's done so in the past, and I don't see any changes to that. But just real quick with the special needs program, I think the special needs program does deserve a lot of attention, and you guys have done a great job with it. But we have to continue spending time looking at that and improving it.
Thank you. The school budget is limited in its available financial resources. How do you prioritize critical decisions that may pit available funding versus staffing needs?
Yeah, that is the toughest question. Never want to go down the road of eliminating staffing. I think the tremendous amount of effort and thought has been put into hiring somebody and creating positions. It's not easy to dismiss or eliminate positions because I believe that a lot of thought has been put into actually creating that position. Shared services has been something that the township has already done, trying to merge activities and budgets. I would, before looking at reducing staff, I would look at every other opportunity first to try to work within a particular budget, whether it's merging services with other agencies or other townships, whatever we need to do to try to reduce those costs. That's the way I would approach it to start off with.
Thank you. Having good facilities is a major component to educating our students. Tell us what you know about the district's grade-level restructuring, expanding capacity to house students, and rebuilding our existing high school.
Well, the restructuring was done, which I think was good. I think the restructuring was a good thing because, I mean, you took the fifth grade out of elementary, pushed it up to Hammershold. You took the seventh grade, pushed it up to Churchill. The unfortunate thing is Churchill is really at capacity right now. The ninth grade really needs to move up to the high school. It really does. You ask any teacher, you ask any administrator, the, you know, when they're at Churchill, those ninth graders are top of the pecking order, and then they get into the high school, and they're at the bottom of the pecking order. So that transition, it's disruptive for some of these high school students. But the restructuring of the grades, I think, was a good idea to move, to create that space that you needed. There was the ability You guys put in the trailers at Churchill just to create that extra space. But my understanding of the law is that once you create temporary structures, you have five years to create a permanent structure. So, and there will be an influx of children into the school system. The township is growing with all the apartments that are coming up. I suspect that we are going to be overflowing with kids more so than we have been led to believe. Because, you know, when studies are done, studies are done. But, you know, nothing ever happens exactly the way the study says it's going to happen. You have to be prepared for worst-case scenario. So I do think we are in a position where we really need to be better prepared for that influx of kids, the normal population growth plus the additional population growth from these apartments.
Thank you. When you first requested information on the position for which you are interviewing, the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics was among the materials you received. Tell us how you interpret this statement. Your job as a board member is not to run the school district, but to see that the district is well-run.
Hundred percent. I agree. I think Dr. Veluski and his team do an exceptional job. I, the board's role is very clear, as outlined in the statement that you just made or that you read. I don't see the role of the board stepping on anyone's toes in administration. I think the district, the board has hired people to do a particular job and execute it. And I think they're doing a fantastic job of executing it. So I agree with the statement wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Kona, that concludes the questions. On behalf of the board, thank you very much for joining us this evening. And I think at this time, we can call for recess.
Thank you.
Calling for recess, thank you.
Good evening and welcome, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you.
You are here to interview for the current vacancy on the Board of Education. When you were invited to be interviewed, you were apprised of the format, that questions would be asked, and that you would be allotted three minutes to respond to each question. The questions were not to be shared with you in advance, and we did not share those questions with you. Before we begin with the questions, you have three minutes to make an opening statement describing why you are interested in becoming a member of the Board of Education and discussing why the board should select you to fill the vacancy. Amongst your accomplishments, please include any community involvement you have had. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. It's nice to see everybody, and thank you for the honor of this opportunity. I'm very grateful. So I am Tim Cummings. I am a resident of East Brunswick for the past couple of years. I've been here for two years now. I guess first and foremost, my, you know, what I should comment on is my what I'm most proud of is my relationship with my wife and my role as a father. My wife and I are raising three children who are engaged in the school system here in East Brunswick. So we have a soon-to-be Churchill student, a soon-to-be Hammershold student, and another year of Warren Stover students, so six, 10, and 12. So, like I said, you know, relatively new to the community, but my wife and I moved down here, like many families do, with the sole intent of embracing and being a part of a community that will uplift and support our children in a healthy and nurturing environment. And we're really grateful to have found that here. Coincidentally, my wife actually grew up in East Brunswick. So I started coming here in 2000, when we were dating at the time. And I'm just, it's funny to think back on that. We met at college, and I just remember traveling up and down Route 18, thinking, whoa, this is quite a busy place. So she grew up in the Frost District. And, you know, so it's been a while that I've been able to be exposed to East Brunswick, which I'm really grateful for. And it's great to now be a part of this community and establish roots here. So accomplishments, and someone going to check me on the time? I don't want to run over, and you let me know.
We've got you on the timer.
I appreciate it, thank you. So, you know, look, I mean, I'm most proud of being a dad, most proud of being a supportive husband. I'm most proud of, you know, from a career perspective, the work that I've been able to do and engage in. You'll notice, I'm sure many of you and all of you have seen my resume and seen the work that I've done and the commitment that I've made to building and uplifting community health and well-being. And that has been my trajectory and will continue to be so. And I hope we can get into that if we have time with regard to what I'm doing now. But, you know, I'm a lucky guy, and I'm a community-minded, driven guy. So I see this as a very valuable opportunity in giving back, which is what I'm so used to doing, right? In helping to support not just my children, but all children. Do I have 10 more seconds? So I was at my fourth grade moving-up ceremony last night from one of my kids over at Hammershold. And, you know, I mean, these are incredible occasions, right? I mean, it's so well-done. We've been so pleased and grateful to be a part of the school district, but my kids specifically. And I'd like to get into, too, the differences of my kids and why I would be a good board member. But, you know, you watch these young children cross the stage. Everyone with so much potential, right? So much hope for these kids. It really is our duty, and I applaud you and thank you for your commitment to their well-being. And I really do consider, oh, there it is. I got it, okay. I'm glad to know that that's how that works. So I'll close on, you know, just
That's really
I'll stop there.
That's it.
I got you.
Sorry. And each one of the questions, we will be having the timer on for the three minutes.
That's perfect, thank you.
How has the role of a board member changed in the past three years?
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
How has the role of a board member changed in the past three years?
How has everything changed in the past three years? Oh, man. So, you know, we're in such a unique space now, right? And we see this in every environment. What COVID has done has permeated everything, the way we engage, the way we interact, how we take care of ourselves. In schools in particular, you know, I mean, there's so much has gone on in these environments over the past couple of years. It's been accelerated. We've seen this in the organization that I work in, the people that we serve. The role of the board member, you know, like that, has had to figure out a way to keep up as well, right? So you've had to find a way to acclimate to all of the various obstacles that have been thrown at you, right? Everything from the mental health to the well-being, the safety, the security. But then how do we learn? How do we engage with one another? It has changed dramatically in every environment. So to me, a good board member is somebody who's willing to accept that things have moved so quickly, recognize what makes sense, and differentiate that from what doesn't, right? And that's a simplification, obviously, of the great task in front of you. This is not an easy time to serve in these roles or in any public office or in any senior leadership office, frankly. And we encounter that in my work all the time. So I think that the role is, in addition to that, and we may get to this too later, is, you know, what's going on with technology? And how people are using it as a tool to learn and grow, and where that's taking us? These are many things that we don't know right now, and we're on the cusp of discovering, and we'll continue to kind of dive into that. But, you know, I got an email from someone today about how it was a warning about, she had just received this from her husband, a warning about how AI robots are being used to call you and take money from you, but they're disguising themselves as a loved one's voice, right? The technology is that so far, that sophisticated. So what does that mean? What does it mean if you can log into ChatGTP? GPT or GTP? I kind of messed that up. I think it's GTP. And produce a paper for yourself? So how do you, as a board, help the administration to stay in front of those obstacles? Support the administration through the process of, you know, what learning is becoming, how we are evolving through that education journey? And then, most importantly, embrace the people that are all involved in that. So not just the students, right, but the teachers, the faculty, the staff, the maintenance, the security guards. I had a lovely talk with Will just a little bit ago for 10 minutes. You know, what is his life like here? How is he a part of this community? So the system has shifted. Oh, that was perfect.
Okay. Thank you. So our next question. How has the student experience changed over the past three years? And what student support will likely dominate the board's agenda over the next year and beyond?
Good question. So how is the students, let me address the first one first. How is the students?
I'll repeat.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
How has the student experience changed over the past three years? And what student support will likely dominate the board's agenda over the next year and beyond?
Yeah, I mean, the students, so the students, gosh, it's so fascinating, right? So with, my kids are still relatively young. So my first grader is learning things that she should learn in first grade. But, you know, they're introducing new tools and resources to, that they're tapping into to be a part of that. My soon-to-be seventh grader, you know, moving into Churchill, will have a whole new, unique and different experience than what he did at Hammershold. So, I'm sorry, just forgive me, but how is the students?
Experience changed.
Experience, thank you, yeah. Thank you, thank you. So I think in addition to that, though, that, and this is not just related to the pandemic. I don't want to harp on that. But we were on a trajectory where people were engaging less with one another compared to when I went to school, right? Or compared to when someone else. I was just mentioning to Will that, you know, when I come, I take my dog for a walk in the morning, and I come around the bend, and there's a group of middle schoolers who are standing, waiting for the bus, just standing, right? And this was happening before the pandemic, but they're all on their phones. Nobody's engaging with one another. So how do we accept that, right? That this is how people are now learning and growing and evolving? Cater to that and help them along that journey, along that process? How do we accommodate that? And so the students' experience of learning, I think, and just in general, is shifting dramatically. And it's really incumbent upon a network, a system, to help support that process. The next question, please.
What student support will likely dominate the board's agenda over the next year and beyond?
I think mental health is going to stick around, right? Because it's not just, and I don't think it's just here. I think it's everywhere. I think that, you know, really implementing, and I don't mean that, that we need more necessarily just Sure, we need more of the therapy, the treatment, the counselors, like those people. But we also need, and I think East Brunswick has done a really good job of this, and I'm so grateful for that, the opportunities for students to explore who they want to be, right? And the more that we can diversify that and allow kids an opportunity to grow and approach and follow their passions, the better off we are. So that's a huge thing that the board is really going to have to focus on, is meeting those two needs. I think in addition to that, and I spoke of this earlier, is keeping up with the challenges that AI will present, right? Or the technology will present. And how do we, you know, stay in front of that, but then also help people to figure out what that looks like and what that means for them?
So as a follow-up, you mentioned a couple of items with mental health, technology, and so forth. How would you assign priorities?
Good question. Well, you can't be well if people are not well. A system doesn't work if we're not whole, right? And so in my role, I work as, I work in social services. We're a social impact organization. We serve women primarily, women and children in Somerset, but we're in eight different counties across the state. It's on my resume. All my life, I've been in this space, right? So in all my life, I've been around people who have struggled severely. And I've committed to finding ways to help support them, right? When you don't have the foundational pieces in place, when someone is not feeling good, everything falls apart. And so it really is our responsibility collectively, as a community, to figure out a way to support that system and uplift that system. And if that, you know, if kids are coming to school that, you know, if kids are coming to school not feeling good, if administrators and teachers are coming to school not feeling good, not feeling that they're supported, if maintenance, all of the pieces and people that are a part of this system, if it's not, you know, if that's not in place, we're at a loss. And so I think that that is the main thing, is the community building, the socialization, appropriate socialization, and, you know, the support of mental health, which comes in multiple different facets.
Thank you. The board is faced with many complex issues, such as special education services, facilities capacity, and financial resources. Describe your approach to becoming educated about these and many other complex issues facing this board.
Yeah, good question. Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, it's a business, right, in many ways? The school is, you employ X amount of people, there's X amount of money coming in and out of this program, and, you know, you are supporting the livelihoods of countless individuals. So how do we, how do I, right, as someone who's not overly exposed to that, get myself up to speed? I'm kind of re-articulating that question fairly, no? Is that okay? Yeah, okay, sort of. So, yeah, I mean, actually, just repeat it for me one more time, just so I can be, sorry, please.
The board is faced with many complex issues, such as special education services, facilities capacity, and financial resources. So describe your approach to becoming educated about these and many other complex issues.
Sure thing. Thank you. So I'm a hands-on guy. That's just how I learn, and that's what I do. And, you know, depending on where I can be of most use and most service, I would, you know, further engage and embed myself in that space. The maintenance, I mean, obviously through budget reports. My role currently is chief operating officer, so we're in $8.2 million operating budget. We oversee, you know, we have 105 staff plus staff. But it's really, for me, I mean, there's always the historical data that you can look at. There's always the current data that you can look at, the trends, you know, the plans, and then the strategic plans, obviously, moving forward. But more than anything, for me, it's about relationships. So how would I begin to build my own, you know, internal portfolio and understanding of this would be to meet with the people who are the experts, right? To meet with the people who have had the experience and the exposure in those places, and begin to pick their brains on what it is that has helped to make this run. I mean, I'm particularly intrigued by the people who have history, right, in the space, and to, you know, just to the best of my ability, learn from them, what it is that has worked, what hasn't, and, you know, see where it goes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Onto the next question. The school budget is limited in its available financial resources. How do you prioritize critical decisions that may pit available funding versus staffing needs?
Yeah, great. Thank you. You have to pay people well, right, to, for them to want to be a part of a system and to contribute to the system. So without the people who are running the ship, right, and helping to move it forward, without them fully engaged and on board, then we are gonna have a problem. Outside of that, you know, it's, there's, clearly there's areas where identified needs that come to fruition or that are made known to us, you know, should be addressed immediately. Safety is a big concern, right? Safety of the class, safety of the kids, well-being of the class, well-being of the kids. And then what I think the board is doing so well as well, in addition to the curriculum and the academic rigor that is already in place, is, you know, supporting and continuing to provide opportunities for students to engage on multiple different platforms. So the diversity of programming that exists in East Brunswick, I think, is second to none, and the goal would be to continue to uplift that as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
Having good school facilities is a major component to educating our students. Tell us what you know about the district's grade level restructuring, expanding capacity to house students, and rebuilding our existing high school?
Yeah, I hundred percent agree that the infrastructure is key, right? So my experience up to this point, just from my own personal experience as a father, has been, ultimately, I'm very pleased with what I've seen so far, right? My kids' classrooms seem adequate, but not overcrowded. I know that, and I've heard rumblings and have seen, I toured Churchill about, you know, that that is a bit more of a tight space, it's constricted, and of course, we have this ongoing, you know, exploration into the high school and whether or not that will come to fruition. You also see these mega buildings going up on 18 that will obviously attract and bring more people into the community, and, you know, there's ongoing growth that is anticipated. So how do you accommodate for that? And how do you do it in a way that also, in addition to supporting the students, supports the community as a whole? And I know that those conversations are deep right now. My wife has been involved in many of the strategic planning sessions for the high school and the exploration sessions for the high school, and so I've been grateful to hear about that and learn about that process. But it's absolutely essential that, you know, we continue to support the well-being of the infrastructure that currently exists. I'm a big believer in sustainability. I actually fixed your toilet in the bathroom. It was running when I got here, so I'm just sharing that. I shared it with the guard as well, but, you know, and that's just who I am. And I'm not just saying that, but I, you know, I came in and it was just flowing water. So that doesn't make sense, right? That doesn't make sense. It doesn't just make sense for us because we're spending bucks on that, that could be channeled somewhere else and be spent better, but, you know, it also doesn't make sense because it's a natural resource that we should be preserving and, you know, honoring. So I'm big into that. I have a lot of project management history. I've done a lot of property management. I worked in the city for 13 years in a not, in an affordable housing provider. So I know the impact that, you know, when you go home at night, and I deal with this day in and day out with the women and children that we serve, if you, if you don't have a safe and comfortable place to put your head down, if your door doesn't lock, if your toilet doesn't flush, how do you function, right? And the same goes for the schools. If you're going into a school and you're jammed up against, you can't fit your backpack in your locker, and you're, you know, you're sitting in a class with 60 other kids, and how do you function? And I've lived in places, you know, I've had enough experience, fortunately, to live in other countries and see how other people learn, and, you know, we're very fortunate here, as I know you all know. And so how do we continue to build those environments where people can be well, socialize well, feel safe, and feel comfortable? And, you know, that's a major concern of mine as my kids grow through the system. You know, I want them to be embraced by these environments that support them, that don't, you know, obstruct them from learning and from growing, and, ah, the timer. Gotcha.
When you first requested information on the position for which you are interviewing, the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics was among the materials you received. Tell us how you interpret this statement. Your job as a board member is not to run the school district, but to see that the district is well-run.
Yeah. Yeah, I love that. And I agree with it wholly. And that's how I view this opportunity. You know, obviously, selfishly, I'm purely invested for my own children, right, as a dad who's engaged in this community, who's not going anywhere. Yeah, what more would I want than for my kids to feel good? And how can I support that? That's what I've done since coming here. I've been involved in, you know, the St. Bart's Football League for a couple of years. My middle child was playing football. I got involved in the Business Advisory Committee, you know. So from the board perspective, though, the, my track record is one of service, and I've mentioned this already, and I apologize if I'm repeating myself, but I see this opportunity as a continuation of that, right? It's a service position, as you all know and are all doing. We don't get paid for this right now. I'm just kidding. That, that's what it's about, right? So what can I do to help support how this system is working, and what gifts can I bring to the table that nurture that, with the full recognition that I don't have all the answers, the humility to accept the fact that there's a lot of learning to do, and that at times I'm wrong, and this is how I lead in my organization, too, but with the straightforwardness and compassionate approach of being able to assert oneself, right, and to share one's opinion and viewpoint, it's the only way that we make ourselves rich and grow. So I fully agree with the fact that, you know, we as a community, and particularly the folks around this table, and if I'm fortunate enough to be appointed myself, you know, are here to make the system run well. And the only way that we do that is by listening to one another, engaging with one another, and, you know, figuring out the best possible path forward, which may not always be in everyone's best interest. And that's the way life goes, as you all know.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Cummings, that concludes the questions on behalf of the board. I think at this point, the only other item that we have on the agenda is to go to closed session, so you can ask for a motion.
Motion.
Statement or the motion first?
You can read the statement, and then we can have the motion.
Okay. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meeting Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Winston, Ms. Beckler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, and we are in closed.